Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 13th, 2018 special call meeting of Mayor and Council. I'll call this meeting the order at 6:00 PM. And our first order of business is to adopt the agenda. You have a copy of the agenda in front of you. Do you want your motion with? I have two motions for a second.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor? Okay. First portion of our meeting tonight is public comment. Anyone wishing to give a public comment, please do so at this time. State your name and address for the record, and please allow me to comment for three minutes.
Good evening. I'm John Hennaback, 3006, Goffers Row. First of all, prior to budget considerations, again, I need to add Sarah Hattie for the work that she's put into this budget, particularly the notes section that I don't know that I've seen much of before, but those do add a great deal to the budget and help somebody like me to better understand what's contained. So, thank you, Sarah. I also want to address the council as we proceed through calendar year, budget calendar year 2019, to focus and concentrate on the critical needs of the city, and that's water and sewer. There are other things that the city needs, desires, or perhaps wants, but if we don't get our hands around the water and sewer issues that are facing this community, forget about growth, forget about the living room in the future, we have got to get these problems resolved. So, focus on what those needs and requirements are. And I would ask a question. If it was approved for transportation costs and currently with the money that's currently budgeted for roads and sidewalks, et cetera, replace that with the, could we use that money for water and sewers?
That's a fairly easy one. We normally don't answer a question, but the answer is yes.
Okay. Then, I may change my mind about the cost because, again, we need to get water and sewer straightened out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. Anybody else? Okay. We've closed the public comments portion of the meeting. Tab A, trying to run.
Tab A, Governor and Body. Item number one is service delivery strategy. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. Every multi-year period, we upgrade-
Your mic's not on.
We upgrade the, um, this, um, what I just did.
Is your red light on?
Yeah. Every, um, so often, we have to upgrade the Carroll County Service Delivery Agreement, which involves the county and the cities inside the county. It's that time, it's due in October, and what I'd like to do tonight is to present to you the current proposal and talk some about the process and my concerns. The mayor and I have been involved in a couple of meetings that have included county officials and mayors and city managers. Uh, we are working from a 1999 document that was upgraded in '12, and the document itself, as presented to you tonight, is not complete. It will also include a number of maps of city limits, the county itself, and then by service, if the service is not provided over the entire county or in all the cities, it will have some hybrid maps that may be unincorporated, plus a few cities, but not all of them. The current agreement, if you'll recall, is so antiquated that when Mount Zion was trying to approve or trying to approve a grant- What was that? Was that two meetings ago or one meeting ago? Two meetings, yes. They had to ask all of the cities to modify this document because their city limits were not accurate, and in the words of the mayor over there, looked like it had been drawn with a crayon. Okay? So, those need to be updated, along with the content. So, this is what you have in this packet, and this is for your consideration in October. What you have is the proposed agreement, which is not significantly different than the 1999 version, in my opinion. I've also pulled out randomly from the Fulton County document, which is the one that I've had experience with, just one item, so that you would see the difference between what I considered a very serious document and what we're talking about. All right? So, if you'll look at this document, that's from Fulton County, three pages just on water. And then if you look at the document that we're dealing with, you know, you're looking at a paragraph per service. So, you sort of visually get the difference. My other concern is that we currently have somewhere between a really good and a great working relationship with the county. So, for the, in our current situation, this document is okay, but if we lose that relationship, either by our elected officials changing the folks that don't know them, or their elected officials changing people that don't know us, this could be, I think, problematic. So, when we get into the October meeting and you guys have to vote to approve this or not, consider that practically it may not matter. The way that this thing gets approved is the county has the vote, yes or no, Carrollton has the vote, yes or no, and then three of the five cities that get to vote have to approve it. And those five are Bowdoin, Mount Zion, Temple, Whitesburg, and us. Breaman and Rootville don't have a vote because they don't have 500 population, and that's the cutoff. So, three of the five of us would have to vote no to stop this thing. And for where we are today, stopping it's not a good idea because, for instance, the Punkin Town shoulder work that was done happened at no cost to the city. They not only provided the equipment and the labor, but the dirt. It came out here and did it, you know, just like that, with being asked one time. So, that's the value of the relationship today. So, this is a very relationship-centric operation that we have with the county. You remember when we were talking about possibly demoing one of our city buildings? We asked that they would do demolition, just like that, yes. Would you help us build out the interior of a building? Yes, just like, you know, I mean, y'all are familiar with all those things. They've all happened since I've been here. But something happens in that relationship, I don't think, I think that we're exposed. We may still be happy, you know, it still may work, but it's not going to work because of this. And it's not working because of this today. You know, there's really no teeth in here that commits anybody, really, to anything. You know, it uses terms like case-by-case basis and, you know, that just don't have any, any real legal substance to it. So, anyway, so I'm looking forward to a conversation at the October meeting on the 9th and probably the 23rd, because I think we're probably going to talk about this twice, and we need to approve it or not at that 23rd meeting. So, I'm not intending for you to vote on this now, or even have read it, or even understand the process yet, but there's some real good GMA summary data on this process, and when you read it, you're, uh, I don't know if you're going to be happy with what we're doing or not, but I don't know that you, I don't know that it's in our interest to fight it either. The mayor and I are sort of thinking not, but we need to have that conversation.
So, kind of to piggyback on what Tom said, we do have a really good relationship with the chairman and with the board commissioners in Carroll County and in Douglas County, but since we're talking about Carroll County specifically. And just for those of you that may wonder what a service delivery strategy or SDAS agreement is, basically what that is, is an agreement between the county and the municipalities within the county that says these are the services that the county will provide, these are the services that the city will provide, so that there's not a duplication of services, service. And where there is a duplication of service, then that's supposed to be specified in the document. And also, what Tom is saying is exactly right. If, um, if leadership were to lead in both of those jurisdictions, in our case, in Bill Rick and in Carroll County, then someone would look at that document and say, this is what we have to go with. This is what Carroll County has promised to do for us, and this is what Bill Rick's responsibility is. So, um, just remember, it is their document, but moving forward, this one hasn't been updated since 2012. I think we probably need to, uh, be a little bit more active with Carroll County at the table and see if we can, you know, adopt a better document. I will say that when Tom and I went to the, to the meeting with the county, we would all too even ask a question in a meeting of all the mayors and city managers, so it's important to us to move forward with this. Any questions?
I guess my only que, I think my only question is, you said this isn't adequate, but we don't want to fight it, but we can sit down and work something out, right? We can still maybe end up with something better than what we've got, still have a good working relationship, correct?
Maybe, maybe a little tweak, but it's not going to look anything like the Fulton County document.
Yeah, I think it's going to be an evolution of the document. I don't think it'll all happen in one month.
The one thing that they did add that we asked for was we've been wanting soccer to be included in the recreation allocation, the reimbursement, and they agreed to that. It's in here.
It's our biggest sport, right?
Right. And we've talked about that ever since I've been here.
That should make a big difference just by itself, as far as-
Mm, that helps.
-the money toward athletics, so, okay.
So, what is the, are you saying do it or don't? I mean, vote on it or don't? Vote yea or nay? What do you?
Right, right now? We have to vote yea or nay. One is, I don't think voting against it is going to matter, because unless there's three of us, it's not going to stop it.
Three cities.
Right, three of the five cities. And I don't see two of the other three joining us. Now, we could try to stir that up in the next four weeks, but I just mentioned to you several examples of where they're doing things for us, basically for free, with no arm twisting. So, right now, it's, we're better off with the relationship than we are with the document. It's just we're running the risk of not having the relationship one day, and then the document's not going to be adequate to really part of the county to do anything. It's almost a written-down gentleman's agreement.
Is this a ten-year agreement, Tom?
I don't think so. There's triggers, and there's different things that require you to-
Totally put it back up. I'll get you the list of those things.
Okay. I think I'd like to see that. I think I'd also like to, uh, we're obviously just looking at this, um, go through it, and we probably will have some discussion about it in October, but I'd like to see a highlight of some of the things that you think maybe we could improve upon, so we can weigh out whether or not the whole document-
It's the structure of it. The lack of specificity about so much of the things that I see in the other document that I've worked on. But, I mean, that was a multi-year-long process of litigation and, you know, attorneys on both sides fighting with attorneys also involved from the municipal side. I mean, it was, it was a multi-headed monster that we went through to get that document done.
I guess, you know, taking this thing through, I've thought about it since Tom and I met when, I think what I would like to see is input from all the council on things that you would like to see changed or added to the agreement, but what it's going to boil down to is that we're going to have to be involved, we, Tom and I, or whoever y'all want, to be involved with the chairman and to, you know, see how that works out with him. I don't want to strain that relationship, but I think he's going to be receptive to listening to changes that we have, based on, based on our meeting with him yesterday. I don't, Tom actually caught a couple of things in there that were problems, and they weren't changed. So, I think they're receptive to listening to our ideas.
Look at the difference in the cost of fire service.
Yeah.
You know, we have a Carroll station, and we pay them a dollar a year or something, and we have a Douglas station, and we pay them three-
Three hundred.
Three fifty plus. We have that capital give-back out of the spot that was, what, nine fifty?
So, over a million dollars.
A million three compared to a dollar.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's a, that's a good way to contrast different styles of service delivery strategies, is to read this one in conjunction with the one that we have with Douglas County. You can see the stylistic differences, as well as the real dollar differences.
I have very little background in negotiating any of these things. However, we did have a class that gave us some really good information for when we do negotiate- What's coming up?
IGAs.
Yes, okay. Um, but does GMA offer us some assistance with designing the document that might be helpful, some legal advice?
Educate us about, about the process and the requirements. There's a good GMA summary document on their website, this is what we're looking at, that talks about what's the intent of the, of the legislation that set this in motion. The disadvantage that we have is when you do something every five or 10 years, you have no skill development, you know? You do it, and then you forget most everything you knew by the time you do it the second go-around, and a lot of us are not here that long, you know? So, you don't have consistent staff participation from one time to the next.
Other comments?
Item two, city cleanup week. In the February meeting, councils established next week as the annual cleanup event. In the summer, we were planning for a Keep Carroll Beautiful event on August the 15th, and we were going to sort of piggyback on that by having ours after that, hoping that a lot of the volume of that event, you know, would go to the camp, to the county and not to us, but their executive director resigned, and so that event was canceled. They hired a new person, and those event, their event schedule is back on track now, so they have an event this Saturday in Carrollton for tie pickup, and then they have an event on October the 6th, I think, in Carrollton also at South Wire for an electronics day. So, I'm proposing in this that we, that we ignore the next week event, and we reschedule for the end of October. And I'm also recommending how we promote it, and I gave you some cost figures in there. So, we can do Facebook and a website, put flyers in a building for free. The question for you is, what do you want to do beyond that, if anything? If we do an individual flyer in the utility bills, that's seventeen hundred dollars. If we do a robo-call, it's five hundred. If we just put a note on the utility bill itself, it's free, and that's what I'm recommending. So, unless you want to spend some money to promote our event, I'd rather just go the free route. Facebook, website, flyers in the building, and a note on the utility bills. And then also, we're recommending that the Wednesday of that week is the senior day. And we had, we had a little bit of a discussion about that, if you remember, about going on private property, but the staff are still recommending that we do that, that we have one day in there where we'll, where we'll go to somebody's front porch or whatever and get appliances or whatever. So, I'm still recommending that. David's looking up at this even, because I'm not sure he was happy with it the first time, and probably not now even.
Get it to the porch, if they can.
What we're using is sixty-five, right?
Yeah, sixty-five, remember? That one's okay.
When you put it under, the BL, are you going to put it in bold letters? So, because most people, they don't look at that BL number and see what they call, what their BL rate is. So, can that be put in bold letters? I mean-
I don't know if it can be bolded, but there is a message box. That's typically where we put the hour or the pickup schedule for holidays and things. So, hopefully, people are already used to looking at that box anyway.
Oh, okay.
But I don't know if I can format it any differently.
Okay.
Those advertising options that are free are sufficient, in my mind. You put in the motion that October 1st would be designated as the day. I think that's an incorrect date, so what date?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one, okay.
My bad. Also, what we agreed to the first time was on that special senior day that they have to actually sign a waiver at the point of pickup before we go on their property. And I'm continuing to recommend that.
So, that waiver would accompany the guys who were there to assist, and they would sign it there? Okay. I'm just hoping that we don't have a situation where you had to have signed that waiver before you got the service picked up, and then you get there and you can't pick up that service.
Are those waivers like some other waivers I've heard of that, well, you sign them, but if it really came to a court of law, it wouldn't mean anything?
Uh, we'll have to look at them, but, um, the theory is to get an adequate and legally binding waiver signed.
We did that recently when Bobby was working on that stormwater repair that was in somebody's yard. You know, there was a way, I don't know, just David-
Yeah, I prepared that one, and that one was a good one. You can run into all sorts of sets of circumstances that might make it questionable, but you do the best you can, get them signed correctly, and-
David, I want to hear your concerns on this though, because this is, I mean, we're setting precedent. If we do on private property, we have said in the past, unless we have written permission, we would not go on private property. So, you know, my question is not only if an employee gets hurt on private property-
I mean, there's, the employee is still covered by the city's insurance. That is not a, that is not a downside for the city if an employee gets hurt on private property. You know, it may expose the landowner to some, if they've got a man trap-
A hole.
A hole or, you know, something, and that may expose them to some additional liability for the city employee going on their property. But I don't see that it exposes the city employee, or the city to any additional exposure for the employee going on the property. You know, our employees have got to be advised to, you know, use prudence. If you see a huge hole there, don't walk through it. Hopefully, we have some good common sense.
I'm not sure which way you said on that. I'm not sure that was a negative response.
So, the waiver would probably include permission?
Yes. You know, if somebody invites you to come on their property for something like this, I don't see it being a legal problem. You know, if they said, I'm inviting you to come on our property to pour me a driveway out here so that you're extending significant city funds, that's prohibited, and I would not ever tell you that that is okay. But for the limited purpose of having a city employee go pick up a trash can or whatever is put out there, if we have created a class of people that we have determined that, you know, they simply can't get it to the road, I don't see that as being a legally challengeable event.
Any questions or comments?
One real quick of Tom. You said that last time the plan was that Keep Carroll Beautiful could take some bulk off of what we would be picking up, but both these items, I mean, both these events are in Carrollton. I don't see our people taking their tires and electronic events. Maybe a few people might. They've got a doctor's appointment, so we'll probably still have a bunch, a regular amount of stuff to pick up, yeah?
Maybe. Yeah, I don't know how many people are going to drive to South Wire and take a old computer or a TV. But we want to follow them in any event, in case they pick up, to get any of our stuff, just so that we don't have to.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll do a tab motion. It is written. We need to modify it for the 31st.
I know, oh, I'm sorry. I know that the city council established the week of October 29th as our annual cleanup week with Wednesday, and that should say October 31st instead of first, designated as the day we provide special assistance to seniors with appliance pickup.
Second. Have a motion second by Councilmember Carter. Any discussion? Not all in favor? You're not. Tab B, finance, Sarah.
I do not have a presentation tonight with PowerPoint. Can you hear me? So, first, we'll get to questions for the general budget. First, we are going to hear from Nancy, from Nancy Berkeley from Evergreen Solutions to give us the report about the salary compensation and classification study that they performed for us. Good evening. Hi. I'm Nancy Berkeley. Nice to see you again. This is my second time here. I'm happy to be here presenting the results of the survey that we conducted for you. I'll get it in, I'm right. I believe, taking just a moment, I believe you have a copy of the draft report as well. So, this presentation of results is a pretty high-level presentation of the results of the study, and I'll be happy to answer questions as we go along, or however you want to. Can you hear me okay? No. Because I'm so tall. Okay, better? I'll just leave. Okay, thank you. All right, so, our agenda for this evening is, my bad, I forgot to go to it, is look at the, is to just talk briefly about the study process. That's primarily what I'm going to focus on. Talk briefly about current conditions of, which is a chapter, actually, somewhere in your report as well. Talk about the current conditions of your current pay plan and where the employees' salaries are now currently in that pay plan. Employee outreach, summary of what we, what I heard from employee outreach when I was here conducting that. I'll explain that. We did talk with the, or I did talk with the city's project team about compensation philosophy, what your compensation philosophy was, our understanding of your compensation philosophy, or the city's compensation philosophy, and how that relates to the study and recommendations that we made. Just a high level of when we looked at the classification, which is the structure of jobs and their hierarchy, the hierarchy of the classifications, something that we call interlequity, their relative work. Compensation review, we conducted a salary survey and a benefit survey, so give you those results. Ultimately, what we did was propose a new pay plan and provided some implementation options for the pay plan, and then I have some additional actions. So, again, what we've completed, analysis of current conditions of the current pay system. I'll give you a slide in a few minutes about that. Again, just analyzing, again, for everyone's benefit, if you will, the current pay plans that you have, and something that's important is to understand where the employee salaries are currently within that pay plan, where they lie within that, those pay ranges and and those pay plans. Again, the city's compensation philosophy, the key factors that make up a compensation philosophy, what our understanding of that is. Internal equity, I'll describe to you the process that we utilize for that. External, so we have internal equity, job classifications, hierarchy of positions, relative worth, if you will, of the jobs internally to the city. External equity is what the market's paying. What is the market paying for those same jobs, that work that's being done by the city employees? And how that relates to, from a comparison standpoint of the position, desired market position that you want to be in as a city. Again, we developed a new pay plan. Individually assigned classifications to pay grades or ranges. That process, let me take just a minute here. We, when we come up with a new pay plan, it's a pay plan with a structure, grades, just identifying ranges, and then we individually slot each position, each classification that we were asked to in the study. So it's not a matter of, we find that this, that you're ahead behind whatever by X percent, let's just take the whole pay plan and change it by that. We very precisely, if you will, grade or slot each classification. And it's balanced, how we do that is balanced between looking at that internal equity and the external equity. We're gonna talk about that a little bit more specifically in a minute. But we individually slot positions. So if a position or a classification here was more ahead of the market, if you will, or ahead of the market, just say ahead of the market, we will slot that. We don't necessarily give it the same kind of slotting that one that was more behind the market. We slot it accordingly to what the market says and that internal equity. Okay? Then we, again, developed options, different implementation options for how you would, with that new pay plan, that new slotting of classifications, how you could consider implementing the pay plan. Different ways of taking current employee salaries and placing them in that new plan, and gave, and gave the city cost estimates for that. The city then took those considerations with some additional conversation with our team and selected a separate implementation plan, which I, I think you all have seen. And we've prepared the draft report, which you have in front of you. We have to provide you a final report yet, which is the next slide, giving you a final report. And the other remaining action is to revise job descriptions. And we take the current, uh, the current job descriptions and add to or revise the job descriptions by some degree of what we found when employees complete something we call a job assessment tool, which is them telling us what that work is that they're conducting. So we have yet to do that.
Okay, so that part of where they filled out what they do...
The J A T.
That hasn't been done, so it'll, it'll end up in that final report. I mean, they've done them, but you haven't.
We've analyzed them, completely analyzed them.
Okay.
Okay, from, for internal equity. So let's talk about that for a minute, okay? So we utilized the J A T in this, in these ways. Maybe this will help, I hope. So we reviewed them absolutely when they completed them, and the supervisors reviewed and gave comments as well. We reviewed them for the work that they were doing. We also came up with what's called a compensable factor score, an actual numerical, numeric score on five compensable factors to evaluate that internal hierarchy. We're also looking at, uh, failure to State of Labor Standards Act, exemption status, et cetera. So we were utilizing those for multiple things at that time. We then also utilize what they've written in there at the end of the study now to prepare job descriptions. You might ask, why do we do that now? After the study? We do that now because as we're going through, we might say, have, let's change this job. We didn't fully understand this in some of the conversations with the, with the city. They may have said, maybe you didn't fully understand what this job is. Not everybody does a perfect job of completing a job, a J A T, et cetera. So when we get all that information, everything we're putting on a job description is the pay, recommended pay rate, everything. So we won't have all that finalized when we do job descriptions. So we've already analyzed everything in there. We just have to take the content now, make it, and put it into that job description. Does that sound? Okay. All right. Employee outreach. So when I was here, had meetings, I had meetings, in addition to having meetings with the employees to describe their participation in completing this job assessment tool, and the supervisors in reviewing it, providing comments. I had conducted what we call focus group meetings and some interview sessions and collected some feedback in a couple of areas with relation, related to compensation, classification, employee benefits, which we did look at as well in the study, and performance evaluation. So as a highlight, if you will, and you've got the specifics in the chapter in the report, here are a few things that I heard from that. Pay is not competitive with peers. Okay, I probably should have prefaces by saying, everything here, I generally hear in almost every study that I conduct, probably too much of a surprise. So there was nothing startling here for Villareca. But nonetheless, you know, perception that pay is not competitive with peers. But you, the city, provide good benefits, could maybe make some changes in vacation rate, car rates, and health insurance costs, and, and the fact that provider changes are made sometimes, and employees are sometimes confused by that. Again, not anything drastic that I don't hear some other times, but nonetheless, a comment.
Can I stop you right there? Yeah, that's what the employee, I don't know, we can't change that, but I would hope that the employee's sure a little bit different now that we're self-funded. That's a good benefit that we have now.
I, I think it's a matter of just being confused some, I, I wouldn't be too alarmed. I, I would take that, you know, under advisement, but again, maybe it's just a matter of continuing communication.
I think probably where this comes from is from changing dental providers, vision providers, life insurance providers, because that has happened quite a few times since I've been here. So I think that's where that's coming from. Also, the change to self-funded had already happened when we began this study, so I really think it's from changing your dental, your vision, and your life insurance providers.
It says health insurance costs, so it is wrong. That's what it says. Health insurance costs. Yeah, and we're recommending a reduction in two of the four premiums in this next premium year.
Okay. Health insurance costs, this was a, in the report, I think it, it talks more specifically. Health insurance costs, again, not, not something I don't hear pretty much every place I go, we go, is that health insurance costs are rising. This is almost the comment from your employees as well. We all know that. However, you know, our, our increases sometimes barely cost, barely cover sometimes the, any, and if any changes in cost over the time we've been here for fifteen years. I'm generalizing, but that's, that's, that's pretty much probably where that comes from. I'm talking about confusion on, again, on plans themselves, and that's just a matter of communication, I think, on employee benefits. Okay? The job titles and, and job descriptions, actually, this is a pretty positive comment, felt generally, and there wasn't a lot of comments on this case of, you know, there's a lot of work to be done there or what have you, so that they were generally saying, we think they're generally okay, maybe some thing, minor things could be changed to make them, you know, more appropriately describe everything that we're doing, because we've taken on additional work. Employee performance evaluation, again, that wasn't a focus of our study, but that comments were that it doesn't seem to be, doesn't seem to be tied to employee salary increase or increases, and seems somewhat meaningless now, because it, the feeling is it's, it's pretty much just a exercise in doing the evaluation, and people are not increased across the city.
Did you have some recommendations to have in the briefing?
Have them for that? Do I have some recommendations? Well, without, yes, I would have some recommendations. I, one of the first, one of the things I would look at certainly is the form, but the form is still just a form, okay? It's really about process, and the process generally is one of having some consistency and evalu, and evaluators, and how the evaluators rate. So some of that comes in training, and some of it comes into holding, honestly, holding different levels of the supervisors, leaders accountable for how they're evaluating employees. That's simply stated, I mean, there's more, it's normally an evolutionary process to get to that point, but accountability probably in the, in the evaluator's ratings is one of the, one of the key ideas. Okay, current conditions, this is what I referred to before as the assessment of current conditions, assessment of your current pay plan and where salary, employee salaries are. We have what we call an open or open range pay plans, with pay range spreads averaging about fifty percent. The best practice for these types of plans is anywhere from fifty, this is a range from the minimum to the maximum, fifty to seventy percent. So it's within, it's within that, but probably a little bit on the low side. We'll talk about that in a little bit more.
I was gonna say, um, I don't know what part of that means at all, and I wrote a couple of notes. Everything from open range, unless you're talking about like a cowboy movie or something, range spread and those sort of things. I think it'd be helpful, and, and some people up here may not need it, and then whoever's here listening, maybe just define a few of these things.
Okay. So open range, an open range plan design is where you have a minimum of a range, salary, and a maximum. And you do not have defined steps typically, where defined that are typically, some, the organization's held to by some manner, of how much of an increase as you go through that pay range, as in one classification.
Like, like, say in the school system where you might have automatic step raises and that sort of thing?
Exactly. That's a step plan.
Okay.
Those are called step plans. Anything without steps, open range.
Okay, got it.
Exactly. The range spread is from the minimum to the maximum.
Okay.
How that, so fifty percent, how much range what there is in those. Step plans sometimes, perhaps in a school system, sometimes they're smaller, smaller width, because sometimes in step plans, you go from the minimum, sorry, I use my hands, you go from the minimum, through that range, and then sometimes it's like, and then you, if you get promoted to the next level, you're in a whole new range. So that's okay, because you're just going from a point A to a point B. Okay? And, and then you move to something else, it's very precise kinds of steps also normally in that hierarchy. In open range, you want some room, if you will, within those ranges from an employee to be able to, to progress their salaries. Really, this isn't anything in a, in a step plan too. You want to be able to see that an employee has an opportunity to progress salaries from the minimum, perhaps to the maximum. Jumping ahead a minute, we're gonna get to our midpoint of the range, even in step plans, okay, is considered market. This is across any comp and class. Midpoint, a calculated midpoint, normally there's like a midpoint step too, is considered market, where employees would expect to be paid, generally speaking, if they're performing proficiently and satisfactorily that same work. So, open range step plans, generally people would come in somewhere closer to the minimums when they're new into the job, not mastered the skills, et cetera. Higher, and there's flexibility in hiring practices too, but be able to progress somewhere to the midpoint market when they're performing proficiently and satisfactorily. The thought, again, in any comp and plan is if they go over that midpoint market, then, and it's in a complete pay plan, then they're making more, which is okay, but more than other people are to do that same general work. You know, it's probably longer than what you wanted, but...
No, that's okay. It was mainly that range spread and how the open range thing played in when I was looking through this PowerPoint.
Okay. So, back to progression of the salary, salaries through that range, here at the bottom of this slide, where you see analyze the distribution of employee salaries across the quartiles. So we take the current range spread and we divide them up into quartiles, and we just say, across, we have a, a little bit more specified in the report, but across that, where are the salaries? Are they clustered in different places? So in this case, you have salaries, if you look at this, forty percent, forty-one percent in the second quartile, third quartile, ten percent, seven point nine in the fourth quart- fourth quartile, you have them more clustered below that, those current midpoints. So one would, we would look at this perhaps and go, hmm, salaries, again, general statement, have not perhaps progressed as they could have or been expected to. Now, again, do we see this in studies that we're doing? Yes, we see this in studies that we're doing, because not every organization has certainly had the opportunity to give salary increases, particularly after the downturn. So this is something that we see, you know, but it is something also that we go, hmm, okay, if you were trying to get more, your employees more competitive salaries, and again, this is in your current structure, we haven't even got to whether or not it's competitive yet, one would hope to see more of those salaries moved toward that midpoint or clustered more around that midpoint. Okay, just from observation that way. So reviewing your compensation philosophy, we looked at these key, key areas here. Desired market position, understanding is that you want to be competitive at what we call market average. So what did that mean to us when we were doing this, when we were conducting the salary survey and making the comparisons, which you have in your chapter here, is that we compared the salary ranges that we collected to, to the, we averaged them all together, the responses that we got for each of the classifications, and then said, if we want to make Villareca's salaries competitive, we want to keep them in line with that market data. Competitive, so you didn't want to lag, you didn't want to be ahead, you wanted to be competitive. That's a very typical position. Your pay practice that you utilize and will continue to utilize, such as maybe new hire salary practice, has some flexibility in it, and you want to maintain that. Open range plan, particularly, open range plans particularly provide for that. You can do that in step plans too, but they are particularly appropriate for that. So again, on the pay plan designs, you wanted to continue with what we call the open range plans.
So if you have flexibility with the new hires, does that help us in what Sarah had termed as compression? Remember, you didn't want to hire new people and have them at the same salary or above your people that had already been there and had experience, maybe knew their job better? Does that help play into that?
So let, so let me say this, if you had, you should always, I think she's probably talking about, again, I went back to this slide particularly, since you have employee salaries clustered in those first and second quartile, and I'm, this is kind of the conversation, you don't have a lot of room, if you will, to be having a whole lot of flexibility without having some impact, like you just mentioned, or potentially having the impact you didn't want to have, having somebody in over or too close, this is compression, too close to somebody else's salary. So if those salaries were pushed more over, you know, I should say this way, to the right in that range, you'd have even more flexibility. One should always consider the internal equity of salaries, and that is, I believe, what she's referring to, that if you had more pay progression of some salaries, you would probably have more flexibility than you have now. Okay? But you gotta make some steps to, to do that probably. That your pay increase methods are, you utilize across the board, cost of living adjustments, and performance-based pay increase methods. And that came into play in the, in the types of implementation options that we recommended. So I talked briefly about analyzing internal equity by looking at the job assessment tools. We use a compensable factor scoring methodology where we analyzed and came up with a compensable factor score on five compensable factors for every classification. We did look at the title as well, I didn't give you a quick summary report, I didn't give you the specifics here, but we made some adjustments to titles, trying to modernize some of the titling and make more appropriate, broaden if we could broaden them and make them specific in some cases if they weren't adequately describing that. But nothing major, so you didn't have a lot of what I call class work to be done. So you didn't have a lot of what I call class work to be done, but we did be appropriate, I think, for the time, you know, for us doing this study. Looking at external equity, we conducted a salary survey, and you'll, you see here, we collected the salary range data from 16 peers, those that are in bold here. We adjusted all of that data, or any of the data that we needed to, for any cost of living differential, so anything that was already calculated in our, in our calculations. And then what we did was compare those, the responses we got, the average, again, as I mentioned before, to your current, your current range structure. So in total, not the specifics here, you have that in the report, for the 51 benchmark classifications, which was a subset of all of them, we found that your structure on the whole, at the minimum, is about 4.8% behind the, what we collected from the peers, the competitors, 10.5 at that midpoint, that market point, and 14.1 at the maximum. Again, results, this doesn't indicate that every single classification was behind or behind by that, but overall, that's how that averaged out. So these range spreads were, well, it's actually 48, there, some of the positions were 48%. We, I think I said 50 on the other one, because that's combining the two together, but of the pay plans, 48 to 50% compared to the peers' average range spreads of 61%. So when we're looking at that, again, on design of a pay plan, we do look at, hmm, where do the peers, how wide are their ranges? How wide the ranges are, are a factor in how much, how you utilizing that range, how much range width do you wanna have in those classifications, people in one classification to be able to progress through that range? The idea is any, in any comp and class structure, is that employees would have an opportunity, hopefully, to progress their salary, I call it to the right, from the minimum to the maximum of the pay range, and then if they so desire and have the opportunity to go off, maybe in different classification or hierarchy of positions, be promoted to different.
I'm gonna back up one thing as you're, I'm in the market, how many should choose in this book right here?
Um, one of the first foremost was, who are, who are, who would be reasonably be considered the competitors within the area in which people could drive to, or, you know, so they.
Size of city or anything like that?
Well, that too, no, that as well, we have size, size of city, so it's several factors, it's size of the organization, will they have the comparable positions or reasonably comparable positions? Okay, 'cause we calculate whether or not they're, it's a great match or a low match as well, not getting into all those details, but yes, size, location, and if, I don't think we had any, but if we needed to pick any that were what I call.
Are there other employees you consider, any other employees you see in here?
Um, no, it's rare enough they're gonna have the same positions, and people could reasonably probably go there, and or with same size, so it's like more like Villarica.
I was gonna wait until I ask this question again, but since we're asking questions, how did the University of West Georgia get on that list? How do they compare to, to other cities as far as the services that they provide?
If they, well, they would have some clerical type positions, for example.
Some what?
Clerical administrative positions.
All the support stuff, I.
Yeah, support staff.
And it says you did.
Now, wait a minute, here it says that you only used the cities that were bold. University of West Georgia's not a bolded city.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, they didn't respond.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just responding to how they got on the list.
Oh, well, that, that made me think that they were being used.
No, they were called a market, they were still called a market here.
That's if they didn't respond.
Yeah, they didn't respond. But if they had, if they had, they would probably have only responded, I'm sorry, to positions. Not everybody gives us the same classifications. One may say, I've got five matches, one may say I've got no matches, two matches.
Sure, I understand the position comparisons, and that makes sense to me, but I also think that population plays a role. And it looks to me like the disparity is, can be wide with some of these. So talk about why you might have selected a city that had twice our population. Is it because of proximity? Is it because of?
Proximity, I'm sorry, proximity generally, again, you're looking at competitive, competitors. If you, if I can go work someplace, let's just be completely honest, it doesn't matter, okay, I know it matters to the city, you know, what I, those people can pay. And they can pay all different things based on those factors that we're talking about. So, you know, you try to get a good balance, again, of the competitors, and again, more like, alt combined. It's, and again, not anybody is, is probably overweighting one of those or the other, and if they don't, if they give the, if we found, and I'm just gonna take that, no clue, Powder Springs gave us a response to something, and it was so far out that we were like, that doesn't make any sense, we just don't even include it in the data.
Well, so my next question then is, did, do you have a system, and I don't see it here, where you weighted these cities?
No, we don't weight, we don't weight.
So in other words, Dallas didn't weigh any more or less on our pay study than Atlanta?
Dallas didn't weigh, now, let me, we don't weight them, but Dallas, but they may have only given us two of the responses. Okay?
Okay, but you didn't weight them, and Atlanta's not one of these, so.
Right.
But let's say Noonan, or let's say.
Burgess County.
Carroll County or.
Right. Fayetteville. Right.
Those, those are just so much better.
So they're not weighted.
No.
Per se.
No, they're not.
Because I would think that a city that had more positions in common with us, had a closer population, might be weighted higher against this city, as you, let's say this is the subject city, which it is, then I would think that a city that most closely resembled us, even if you did give weight to proximity, would've made a difference. Are you saying that it did not?
We, we don't typically, I'm gonna say it this way, we don't typically wait unless we're specifically asked by a client to wait something, because it is so much, and that's generally, I've had it in one study in five years, one. Generally, when they have a peer that is so much, you know, they're competitive, what have you, it's like, we've got to compete with X to be able to keep our employees. One, one time in the five years I worked as a consultant, it just, by how the data works with five do this, three give us this, two give us this, it, even in that weighting, slightly different, it doesn't mathematically end up being that much of a difference in doing that, just the way.
What is weight? I'm confused. When you're saying you weighted.
So we could, we could have, if we'd been asked or, you know, thought it was important to do so, weighted one of the cities, what they gave us, the values, at a higher value, we could've said, oh, I'll say it like this, this is not exactly how it works, but we'll count their data twice, that's not exactly how it works, because they are this, you know, this peer that we've got to make sure we compete with. So let's weight them, let's give them a higher amount of the contribution of what that salary range data is to that overall for that classification.
And I hope we don't, if we ask you questions, you could say it's in the report, but there could be things in here we ask about, but we didn't get this till this afternoon. I haven't read through any of it. I did do the PowerPoint, I made it through the PowerPoint, but have not read this, so it could be that a few of our questions might, might be answered when we read that.
Not a problem, not a problem at all.
When we submitted market peer recommendations, about half of these are cities within a thousand of our population, so College Park, Congress, Covington, Dallas, Fayetteville, Monroe, Norcross, Powder Springs, Riverdale, Swanee, Winder, those are all population picks. And then Carroll County, Douglas County, Paulding, Douglas for Carrollton, those are all geographic, right? So those are obvious competitors. And the chief threw in Georgia State Patrol, because we, we lose people there, and there seemed like there was another Georgia motor carriers, so, and several of those we didn't get anything back on. But, I mean, we can lose people, the, the size of the entity that we lose people to, in my experience here so far, has been without regard to the size of that competing entity. Like, we just lost a guy to Bacchanal. They're paying him 15 grand more than we're paid, than we were paying him. So I mean, it doesn't have to be Carrollton or one of the counties that pays more.
Let me just say, let me just say something about the Georgia State Patrol. I'm, I'm kinda glad that didn't come back, quite frankly, because their salaries, if that would've been included, what they're getting now, that, that would've weighted this, I mean, they're, they're making a lot more than probably most jurisdictions in the state of Georgia now, counties and cities, so.
So the way that we, the way that we dealt with that was, we, we looked specifically in the police area at the entities that are offering more money than we are, and sort of ignored them. The guys that are at the top, so one was at 44,000, one was at 42,000, and we didn't feel like we had to go there to compete, to hire and retain, because our agency has a better reputation, our benefits are solid, take home cars, you know what I'm saying? I mean, the, the condition of the community, we don't have to lead the whole area in pay to hire and recruit people, but we can't be $8,000 less than the top, and so we, so we agreed on the number in the middle, which is, which is about 41.6 is what we're trying to get to. So we know that when we get there, and if we do this plan and we implement it each year, in a couple of years, we'll be at that minimum 41.6, we're still gonna be below the guys at the top. We just don't think they're gonna have much success poaching our guys if we're a couple of grand short, because the salary is not the only consideration. So we're, so we, you know, we, we almost ignored the top end of the, of the competition, because they're having to do that for reasons other than money. They're trying to use money to compensate for operational things where they're deficient. And we don't have to do that, so we don't have to offer as much money.
And we were, yes, conducted several of those studies for some of the salaries where we discussed those salaries, so. Let me mention something back on that, another jurisdiction organization, whatever can offer X amount more. I always like to ask, how were they able to do that? You may or may not know. Back for just a moment on pay practices, okay? Because sometimes, it could be that their pay ranges are very similar to yours, but they have a flexible pay practice of, oh, we'll hire these people, it could be a skill that, you know, is really in demand, close to the midpoint, and I'm gonna go back to what we said, and you're not as able to do that because your salaries, you don't wanna affect the internal equity of salaries, you're not able to do that. So sometimes, it's a matter of pay practice, particularly in today's world, you don't know sometimes, it's a very, you know that, or you do know this, I'm sure, there's all sorts of things you're competing with, those pay practices, not just the range as much anymore. It's the range, the pay practices, are they offering some incentives, some people are offering, you know, sign-on, you know, bonuses, that's not very, you know, prevalent now, but you could be competing with that. The reason they can offer more could be any one of those factors, just as a point. Okay?
Mayor, to give you a, a concrete example of what fixing this stuff looks like, take, take the two counties that we're in, and the problems they have in the sheriff's department where they're so underpaid. For Carroll County, to match what we're doing, just to match it, $3,000 a person, that's a buck fifty an hour, 200 people, that's 650 grand.
Just on the.
Just to match what we're doing, so they've gotta spend 650 just to tread water with us if we do this, and they're way behind us in pay. So it's really not possible for them to compete with us on pay. Like, chief, how long would it take them? How many dollars an hour are they behind, is Carroll County sheriff?
Sorry for sheriff.
Behind us? For an officer, a deputy compared to a starter here?
I, I don't know exactly, but it's, it's, uh, probably 35.
Dollars an hour? So they would have to come up with 650 a year, new money, for years, to catch us, assuming we didn't do anything. You know what I'm saying? So, and we're gonna be competitive against both the sheriff's departments, no matter what happens, for the next five years at least.
All right. So I can go ahead and discuss this slide. We did look at benefits data too. Again, I know you haven't had the time to review this, but they're pretty detailed in the report, so I'm not gonna get too specific right now, here, either on benefits, but we did go to the same peers that we asked to do the salary survey, and we collected some benefits data from these peers here. It's always a lesser number than participates in the salary survey, 'cause people just don't generally wanna complete a big benefit survey sometimes, unfortunately.
Okay, I'll ask you a question. Now, I like that little chart that you got right there where it shows that benefits is a percentage of the total compensation, the peer average is 30.7%, Villarica is 29%. That, that's easy to understand. Is that chart somewhere in here, other than the chart that I don't think you just talked about, for wages, for compensation?
That chart is in here, in the report, yes, that same number.
That same comparison?
Yes, it's on page 47, 47.
Oh, okay, and, and it's not in your PowerPoint presentation?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't understand then what you just, I'm sorry.
Right.
That number right there, total, benefits as a percent of total compensation?
What I'm saying is, for, for Jeff, for the mayor to look at, if, if I'm looking at benefits as a percentage of total compensation, and the peer average is 30.7%, and Villarica's is 29%, it's easy for me to tell how deficient we are on benefits as part of compensation. And you're saying that number is in the report, it's just not in your PowerPoint.
Well, that same, that same graphic, you're, are you talking?
You want it for salary?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Talking for salary. Well, salary would just be the.
I wanna know how much below our peers that our salaries are. If you can do an average on benefits, couldn't.
If 30.7 is the map, it's, it's simply a mathematical calculation of the total salary and benefits, okay? Divided by the discretionary, or the discretionary benefits, what percent are discretionary benefits? So the other percentage would be what you're paying for salary. The other percentage, from 30.7 to 100, and the other percentage to 29, so roughly, you know, that's 30%. You're paying 70, 70, 60% for salary.
71%.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not what the mayor's asking. Mayor wants to know how our salaries stack up against their salaries, not as a percentage of the total compensation.
Okay, but, okay, so I gave, so, 44 is the detail, on page 44, the exhibit 4B is the detail of right here, how your, how your salaries stack up. This is, on pay, on this slide right here is how your salaries stack up. You're 4.8% behind at the minimum, 10.5 at the midpoint, and 14.1 at the maximum. Is that what you're asking?
It is.
I'm sorry. Get around.
I just, I mean, I like it when we have buckets when Sarah does her presentations, and you get, you know, we got the, the benefits portion of it, we didn't get the salary portion of it, so.
Thank you, officer. Yes, and you have the detail then, for everybody here who has the report, in exhibit 4B. Okay? I apologize, yes. All right, so back to this, again, this is the discretionary benefits as a percent of total compensation. Generally, you're comparable, okay? I wouldn't, I wouldn't put an absolute, we ask the organizations to calculate this percentage anyway for us, we aren't getting into the details of their books of every single, single thing that's discretionary benefits, we give them literally how to calculate this, but, you know, it could, it could, it could've fluctuated a little bit from what somebody gives us. This is in the ballpark, this is about what we see, generally speaking, for all public sector employees, that they're paying anywhere, that the percentage of benefits as a percent of total compensation is around 30, 30-something percent. Okay, so, we developed this new open range pay. Okay, so, we developed this new open-range pay plan with thirty-two pay grades and ranges. And these range buds are now, we came up with sixty percent, because that was more similar to what the peers had from what we found in the salary survey, of the sixty-one. So we wanted to make the ranges, we wanted to make them look more like what we saw from the peers that responded, or we collected data from. That's a typical way to do this. Um, so it's a market-competitive pay plan now. And then that next bullet is, what I mentioned before, how we individually slotted each position into that pay plan. And we utilized, again, a balance of internal and external equity to do that. We then developed multiple, implemented what we call experimentation options for how you would take current employee salaries and place them in that new, um, plan. Um, as you're aware, um, the city then selected one of those options, modified it slightly, um, to provide what we call some market adjustments for employees. So, please reviewing some phase, perhaps, possible phased implementation, maybe, of that type of, um, option.
So what's in the budget is a modified version of what they gave us. They looked at, one of the options that was given to us was bringing people up to a maximum of midpoint, which is the market that she showed earlier. However, that, um, we knew that was too much of a dollar amount. So the first version we gave you, we dropped that down to forty percent. We capped 'em, we didn't bring them all the way to the midpoint. We capped it at forty percent of that new range. Then, again, that number was pretty high, that was six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars that we first presented to y'all. So then we capped it, well, we went through every iteration we possibly could, and we ended up capping it and looking at more of a multi-year implementation. So what's in the budget is bringing people up to midpoint at a maximum. Maximum midpoint, but capping it at three thousand dollars, increasing this current budget. So that cost in your budget is three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Calculated if we, you know, if we were to implement over the next two years the rest of it, to bring people up to where they need to be, again, at a maximum of the midpoint of the new range. The first year being three hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, the second year being one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. See, it's tapering off, 'cause people are hitting that, where they're supposed to be. The third year being seventy-two thousand dollars, and then we would still have an additional forty-three thousand to address. So that's how we...
We said the first year was three hundred and twenty, and then here says first year base salary is two-sixty-six thousand.
Where are you looking? That was the adjustment.
That's just the general fund, a little bit.
That, those changes are the changes to the general fund and budget. So overall, three twenty-one.
The whole city.
Yes, three twenty-one is for the whole city.
And the fires and stormwater and all that.
We've talked about delaying the implementation, there are some consequences that we'll see with that. Uh, we, by capping how much we're giving to people this year, we are gonna have seven people that'll be below their new minimum of their pay grades. This will cause compression in the police department. It will cause compression with new hires, 'cause, again, if we're trying to be competitive with who we're hiring, and like she said, um, you know, if someone has the experience and they're capable of doing what, the job that we want them to do. So as we hire, um, for instance, as we hire an IT person, or an economic development person, we already have an IT person, but that's a relatively new hire. As we're looking to hire those people, we want the people with the skills that we need and the experience that we have, so we wanna pay the market, which, as we look at this new pay grade, would be more mid-range. But by delaying the implementation, our current employees aren't there yet. So I'm just explaining some of the consequences of our delay. It affects the new hire, and how that compresses the people we already have, so... Any questions for Nancy while she's still here?
Well, I just, I just wanna say this, 'cause I know it's on the line with the council up here, and, um, Councilman Preston said this over here, but, I mean, this is a lot to swallow. And I received this by email today at two-thirty-three. And it's a forty-page document. It's seven fifteen right now. This is a lot for us to comprehend. And I, you know, I don't know how the council's gonna roll, but I will just hope that if we do this in the future, that we be given a little bit more time to look at. This is a big part of the budget. And I have said on record that I believe our employees need to be compensated. And we never have been when I was employed, and, uh, so kudos to everybody for putting this together. It's a step in the right direction. But at the same time, just in fairness to the council, to look at, to get something literally four hours before the meeting starts is just, is tough.
I might have more questions. No, I might, after I read the report. But I did make sure I got through the PowerPoint, and I think I'm good. Y'all chose the cities. Y'all chose the cities, right? Evergreen did.
We made a list of recommendations that we wanted to make, and how to compensate. We wanna make sure we got the way we need to. Yes, we are, we need the first selection.
The first selection? There was more than one selection of cities, or...
We made the first recommendation, or twice in my work.
Okay, okay.
We made, we made, we always make the recommendations, it's typical practice, and we get any input.
Okay.
We added back those cities with similar population.
I don't recall any specific...
Yes, it's those ten that I read out a while ago, that are within a thousand of our population. That was what I gave them back.
Okay.
Because they knew, they know from working out here who the geographic competition is. And I just pulled the rest of those off of the list, because I use that list a lot when we're trying to figure out are we similar to what other people are doing. So I sorta know who those guys are that are fourteen to sixteen thousand in population.
And I had written in my notes what you had said, that this is strictly about the numbers. It's not about personality, quality, performance, or anything else, just numbers.
It's here, yup, it's penetration of the current grade, and it doesn't look at that other stuff. Another thing that you may wanna make a mental note of is, when you look at the final report, what you're gonna find new in there is the benefit information, which isn't, isn't a part of the decision that we're making. Because the rest of the report is all this stuff that we've already given you. The new structure, all the way down through the implementation and the list of individual employees, that's... So you've seen everything, I think, that Evergreen has produced, except for the benefit information, which is, which we're not using to make any of these decisions. But there are, there must be ten pages of benefit info, so I mean, there's, there's a lot of new info in there, it's just not part of the salary part of it, it's the benefit part.
I imagine that people listening or sitting here might have a couple of these questions. Would you tell me what calculated differential, differentials from current ranges? I mean, I was reading the PowerPoint, and I go, I have no clue what that means. Calculated differentials from current ranges? I mean, comparison, it's our comparison, and what's different with us with those cities? I don't know, I guessed.
So...
'Cause it had to do with market peers on page nine.
Yes. So, for those who don't have the benefit of having the report or whatever too. So, when we were, for each classification, where we collected data, we collected salary range data, we averaged all the peer responses together, and got a number, a number, minimum, midpoint, and maximum. And then we calculated the differential, ahead or behind, the difference, between that number, minimum, midpoint, and maximum, or salary range point, and what your current range is. So we calculated the difference.
Okay, all right.
Simply stated.
That's what I need.
Yes, sorry.
So...
Just throw a few more slides out if you...
Well, I got a little concerned when I saw that the, um, the evaluations were seen as meaningless, but then I realized that was, that wasn't something you were saying, it was a perception that you felt like you got from the employees.
Yes.
And if I recall, Tom, you said something about, everybody gives a three. So when we do our evaluations, I'm assuming that was maybe generalized, maybe not everyone, but almost everyone.
Yeah, there is, there is an implementation method that Evergreen could've recommended if we had multiple years of really strenuous, accurate evaluations, but we don't. So that option wasn't available to us.
Well, I don't think we even had an objective one prior to that. So we're ahead of where we were, we just gotta keep moving. I'm serious, we just gotta keep moving down the road to do that.
Question?
That's it.
Other questions?
Do you want me to continue, and just...
Please.
Go ahead. Just this slide right here, fourteen. So that same way that I just mentioned where we calculate differentials, we take, okay, after we've come up with these new pay plan, new pay ranges, and pay grade slotting, if we were to conduct the same salary survey using the current data that we collected, where would your salary structure be? And this is the result. So, we don't purposely try to get it at these numbers, at this differential, if you will. It's a matter of us slotting, and then voila, you know, you have to pick up the pay grade and what have you. Some of it's the math. But this isn't too far ahead or anything, so I go to my team, you know, we didn't, we didn't overdo it, and when we made the sliding or anything like that, I would be concerned if we had. But, so, right now, then, if we were to conduct that same salary survey with the new pay plan, your differentials would be that you were four point or percent ahead at the minimum, three point two at the midpoint, and three at the maximum. This gives you a little room, we call it, we build these plans for about three years, kind of anyway, so it gives you a little room for that anyway. One of the next recommendations are, is to, um, conduct these studies every three to five years, so that fits with that, you have some, some growth, if you will, in that salary structure. Okay? Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to create this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another aggregate number that you might wanna make a note of, Sarah looked at this, is if we implement what we recommended on Tuesday with the three thousand cap, Sarah, help me, you've got eighty-two people that get the three thousand, who still would need more. About seventy that would be at the, at the market. And then there's seven that hadn't even gotten the minimum.
Even with three thousand?
Yeah, there's that far, there's seven that are that far, like, any new police officer would be, because we're bringing them from roughly thirty-six-five to roughly forty-one-five. So there's five grand in there for police, it's gonna take them two years. Right, so, so any new police are not gonna be at the minimum. So when we hire for the next year, we'd be hiring at that thirty-nine-five number.
Gotcha.
And that's where you get some compression, 'cause for a whole year, you're gonna be hiring people at the same, so new people are gonna be making as much as people that are already working here, you know? So you've got them stacked in the same salary slot. And then when you do it next year, you'll start getting some separation, 'cause one group would go potentially the whole three grand, the other might, might not, because of their tenure. But that's why the number drops from three hundred and something thousand first year to a hundred and eighty to, I don't remember, how much?
Seventy-two, seventy-two the third year.
And all that presupposes that our economy grows at a rate that lets us do it.
And that would be appropriate, because when I asked you if we could afford it, you said no, with the full implementation.
Not do all the other stuff we're gonna do.
When you first gave us the initial proposal, you had capped the salaries at forty percent, which was higher than below market, which was the midpoint. When you came back with the second one, and you capped the dollar amount, you also raised that to the fifty percent.
Correct.
Is that correct? So...
And not everybody's going to fifty percent. It's depending on where they are now in their current pay grade, so it's not automatic, everybody's going to fifty percent. It's, um, it's maximum of fifty percent.
So when I read this summary in the, in the full report, it says, "Overall, employees expressed satisfaction with working for the city, and appreciated the relatively generous benefits package. However, they believe that the city's compensation system was not competitive with the local labor market, and that their salaries had not progressed as expected." My concern is that, one of the things we want to resolve is how we evaluate employees, and they receive merit-based increases. If you snatch everyone to the fifty percent, or somewhere in that range, which is almost what this does, where do you leave room for that growth, for those merit increases?
So it doesn't take them all to fifty, it depends on where they are now. So, that means, right now, if they're in their pay grade and they're at the twenty-fifth percent sol...
I understand, if they get the thirty, to the three thousand mark, it may not have pulled them to fifty percent, 'cause they got capped right there.
Well, if, so if they're at the twenty-five percent mark in their current pay grade, we're only gonna take them to the twenty-five percent mark in their new pay grade. So for some, some people, that's seven hundred dollars, they're fixed, they're where they need to be, end of story, and they're not going to fifty percent. Other people, because the pay, their whole pay grade shifted, so that's, that's part of the increase, and maybe they're sitting at thirty, forty percent right now, or even fifty percent. So their increase may be seven thousand dollars, six thousand dollars. So three thousand is only getting them part of the way.
Okay.
So part of it, when you look objectively, it's the positions and the pay grade itself that's causing some of these increases, not necessarily just the individual. It's the pay grade, pay structure itself.
Yeah, we've identified one position that this clearly doesn't work. We've got one position that we've adjusted three times, and what we're offering is like two-thirds of what we're being asked to pay. So we're not even in the ballgame on, on one particular position. And then you did, and I just told you the story of one position, one of our operator positions, where we lost a guy to a fifteen thousand dollar increase. So, like we said, the two places that we're most at risk is police and operators.
Water and sewer treatment plant operators?
Water and sewer treatment plant operators, that's where we're the most likely to be poked. We try them and they leave. Yup. Especially when we hire somebody really sharp, and they jump right into the first classification exam and pass it. You know, that's, the same thing that the chief deals with when we send somebody to the academy, and they're clearly, you know, an up-and-coming officer, not just somebody that's gonna meet the minimums of performance, but somebody with some real potential to grow in the promotions and be a leader in the department. Those, those people are really hard to keep.
And you've asked, you know, where do we go from here? We are all in agreement that the evaluation process needs to be improved, uh, needs to have more depth to it, and actually mean something. You know, maybe there's a difference in the future of cost of living adjustments, where there's a lot of increases across the board, but merit is truly, for the high performers, truly based on merit, and not the way we've been doing it.
Yeah, we have, what, a half a dozen people that are already at the market, but six people aren't getting any increase. So we've got some people that are questionably paid on both ends of the spectrum. Other questions? Comments?
How you explain to somebody how they get a raise, but everybody, how you...
In the budget, and the way we've shown it in the budget, six to eight people that will not get a raise this year. So we've included a small Christmas bonus for those, because you're, almost everybody, which, uh...
So now, okay, you're saying you're gonna give them a small Christmas bonus, so nobody else gets Christmas, just those six get a Christmas bonus?
That's how we budgeted it, yes.
Yeah, if we're gonna give them up to three grand in increase, we didn't put a Christmas dollar amount in there.
Christmas party, though.
What you do?
You got a question?
Well, I gotta say, if I could have a Christmas bonus for three thousand additional dollars this year, I'd go with the three thousand, so...
I have a question for David. In the state of Georgia...
Um, in the state of Georgia, are the municipalities required a balanced budget?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, it was presented to us here as well, it looks unbalanced, it was a hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars worth of revenue. I would like to see that put in the council contingency fund so it can balance out.
Well, governmental funds have to be balanced, zero balance budget. But the enterprise funds do not have to. So what those, I can show net income on enterprise funds. So what, where that out of balance, it's actually net income on our enterprise funds.
Okay.
Just never seen that before.
Funds that have to be balanced.
Yes.
They've just never seen that before.
Funds, the governmental type funds have to be balanced. Enterprise funds you can, they are for profit.
The chief's seizure money funds don't have to balance.
Please, Councilwoman Dugle said, we've never seen a, a positive balance in our enterprise funds, so that we're, we're trying.
To do with it.
And we've always had, presented to us a balanced budget, and we usually see one with extra revenues sitting there.
Yeah, that, when you have a bond issue, those are not balanced because you get all the revenue in the first year, usually with no expense, and then every year after that, you have expense with no revenue, so.
So if we approve this budget with, with this latest salary recommendation, is there another step to this recommendation that also? Turn my mic.
Yes, all you're doing is approving the, the allocation of the money. We haven't brought anything for the implementation. What we're looking for is the ordinance to be approved for the budget, which we need to have done by September thirtieth. And then we can come back at the next meeting and talk again about the salary stuff after you get through the report so that we would make the, any raises, if they're approved, retroactive.
Yes, we've budgeted them for October first.
If you twist Stephanie's arm to do one hundred and fifty retroactive calculations, but yeah.
So this motion here to adopt the budget doesn't include the, um?
The implementation of the pay, just the money in the budget for the salary increases.
For. You said, "I don't want to adopt a budget."
Yeah, we don't, we don't have authority based on anything y'all have done yet to raise anybody's salary.
So let me ask this, maybe I'm behind, but I don't know. Now you're talking about the three, the thirty, three thousand dollars, that's to put them where they should be, am I right?
Well, to start in that direction, right?
That's to do that, that's not giving them a bonus, that's putting them where they should be, or where they headed up to.
Right.
So that, that, that kills that statement that I just heard, right?
Which is what?
That we give them a bonus whether they, I give them a bonus than ever.
Well, there's, how many business?
Six or eight, yeah, that would just get a Christmas bonus. There, those are people that are so highly paid relative to their grade that they're already at or beyond the fifty percent mark.
In other words, those are the ones, I don't want, you know, when we said some of our salaries are poor, not all our salaries are poor, we have some good salaries. We have some that are poor. Uh, but we have some good ones, and those are the ones that are already maxed out, as you, I think is the term you've used before.
They hit the cap.
Okay.
The cap is arbitrary, I mean, we, we, we're recommending the fifty percent cap. The first time we did this and we recommended forty percent, we didn't have an individual dollar limit, and so forty percent was as far as we could go with the money we had. And, and that was even taking out, you know, stormwater utility and the branding and website and the traffic study, I mean, we took all that stuff out even to get to that point.
Tom, what kind of plan do you have for evaluating employees and, um, merit?
I don't at this point. That, we're, we're going to have to embark on a really significant manager training exercise to get to that point because, like Sarah said, everything that I see coming across my desk is just average, 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 average.
And the two keys, I've done these for years and years, and you mentioned it, the two keys are training the supervisors and then holding the supervisors accountable to the evaluations that they give.
Yeah, we've got a long way to go to get to that. And I, I haven't, I can't say that I've ever worked anywhere where that was done effectively.
Never.
I've never seen it done effectively.
There's no question that what we're doing here with this salary study and these salary increases is making up for a decade or more of underpaying a lot of employees. So I'm inclined to, to do this based on this second recommendation and based on having reviewed how some of this criteria was put together. But along with that, I think there has to be an aggressive plan going forward for evaluations and merit-based increases. Because without that, we're going to come right back here in a few years and be asked to do this same thing again, or maybe even sooner than a few years. And I, I would hate to have, to ask another council to do what we're doing because this is a significant hit to these numbers, and the public has noticed it. And they should, but it's been a long time coming.
And the manager training that Tom referred to, it is budgeted in our expenditures this year for 2019. So he'll be able to implement that class he was referring to for the managers.
Yeah, it's that amount under that twenty-one.
Yes. Twenty thousand in there for the training.
Yeah, I've, I've told you all the story already that it took us four years and a quarter to, to get to where we needed to be with the personnel in my previous situation. It is not easy or quick. And, and I had the absolute cooperation of the entire elected body to do that for years and years. You know, I got no pushback, protecting anybody, you know, all the things that you would, that you would imagine that could happen, and it still took four years and a quarter to do that.
And one of them was a Chick-fil-A trainer, and I'm thinking that's probably a good idea. Have you seen the one guy right over there? He can get all those people through that line, they're doing something right.
Yeah, the guy that we used in the second phase of that finding was, he was fantastic.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the fiscal year 2019 operating and capital budget as presented in the September five, two thousand and eighteen version.
Have a motion in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Unanimous, congratulations. We have a budget.
Sarah and staff and Stephanie and everybody that has something to do with it. I, I just want, I want to say this, and the council has all said this to a person, but, and even our staff, you know, people in public comment have got enough, John Hannerback said something tonight. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I know you spent a lot of hours during the middle of the night, early in the morning, weekends, Tom, Stephanie, thank you for this. And, uh, we're going to, we'll work on this budget. I would like to see us do this on a quarterly basis and, and just kind of work. I don't want us to see us, you know, back this up until a month, two months before the end of the year and start working on it. So if we could do, you know, start working on it maybe six months into the year so that when we get to this point, we've already done all this, that would be great. So what, what I would like to see us do is, at the end of March, we'll be halfway through. So around, let's say, the twentieth of April, we close March. So we'll have six-month numbers. But we'll have the lion's share of our whole revenue for the year already booked, which will do two things. One is we'll be able to forecast revenue pretty well, but we can make mid-year budget adjustments then if we see that we're outperforming revenue.
And we'll know by then whether we have a T-splice.
And, well, we're going to know if we got T-splice here.
I know, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, that's, which is huge.
Yeah.
And there's no budget for T-splice in this. So if the T-splice passed, then that mid-year review, we could do that, the traffic study, blah, blah, blah. So if I, if I could get y'all thinking about chronology, then into April first of May, we're doing this six-month review, forecasting, adjusting, T-splice. That'd be pretty cool.
Yeah.
And then as soon as we do that, we're working on the next budget.
I like it.
For nineteen twenty. So you've got like five months to chill out and then.
Say, I don't even want to think about budgets right now, but I, I will.
And the other thing that happens is we, we pick up the audit field work in January, early February, the reports due to end of March. So just a month before all that, end of April stuff happens, we get the financial statements for the year that we're in audited and produced, right? So we can look back a year, look ahead six months, you see?
I like it.
That's what I like about this fiscal year change, is that's the practical benefit of doing what we did.
Let's make it happen. Tab C, executive session, David.
I have a motion to, to the executive session, be specified by the company, point one, important compensation. Our disciplinary absence or dismissal of periodic evaluation rating of the council board.
We have a motion to go on executive session. Senator. Can I hear a second? House member of March being seconded. All in favor? We are in executive session. All stick around, again.